While this meeting is in order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda are three proclamations, one for Constitution Week, the next for Fire Prevention Week, and the next for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Would somebody with, for the Constitution Week come up to the podium? Joe Tryngem. Whereas September 17th, 2015 marks the 228th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, in view of the inherent value of this, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2015, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigorously protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
And if you would like to say anything?
I would like to say, the day, the daughters of the American Revolution in 1955 petitioned Congress to make this week of, of, of law, to continue it. In July of 1956, Congress passed it, and President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed into law on August 2nd, 1956. We're almost 60 years old with the proclamation.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Fire Prevention Week. Unfortunately, we only have two meetings a month, so we have to throw in a bunch of these at times. Whereas the Town of Silver City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of, of all those living in and visiting the Town of Silver City, and whereas fire is serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Home fires killed more than 2,755 people in the United States in 2013 according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 369,500 home fires. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. And whereas in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, none were working, and when smoke alarms should have operated but did not do so, it was usually because batteries were missing, disconnected, or dead. Half of the fire deaths resulted from fires reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when most people are asleep. And whereas the Town of Silver City's residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home, and they should install smoke alarms and alert devices that meet the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing. And whereas the Town of Silver City's residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the Town of Silver City's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fires injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the 2015 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Hear the Beep Where You Sleep," every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm, effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, in view of the inherent value of this, do hereby proclaim October 4th through the 10th, 2015, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this town, and I urge all the people of the Town of Silver City to install smoke alarms in every bedroom outside each sleeping area and on every level of the home, including the basement, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Town of Silver City Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week. Thank you.
That's you. Just wanted to thank you all for your time. Last year, we saw a little over 1,100 students, and it's a, it's an enjoyable week getting out there and educating the kids and increasing safety.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Is anybody here for Domestic Violence Awareness Month? Whereas homes should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, safety, and peace. Tragically for many Americans, these are blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear. Domestic violence touches the lives of Americans of all ages, leaving a devastating impact on women, men, and children of every background and circumstance. A family's home becomes a place of fear, hopelessness, and desperation when a woman is battered by her partner, a child witnesses the abuse of a loved one, or a senior is victimized by family members. And whereas domestic violence remains a major public health, social justice, and human's right issue requiring particular attention, and its interventions must be with the inclusion of both women and men at all levels. There is an urgent need, more than ever, to get involved. The wide prevalence of domestic violence and sexual assault, along with the shocking silence and inaction around these issues, compels all of us to come together and get involved to end the abuse, abusive violence in our relationships, in our families, and in our communities. And whereas since 1983, El Refugio has been actively involved in addressing domestic violence in our community, El Refugio has collaborated with numerous people and groups to respond, educate, and bring awareness to all people about domestic violence. Last year, El Refugio Incorporated served 271 women victims, 128 children, and 72 offenders. To this end, El Refugio Incorporated invites all of us to support October 2015 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and it will be dedicated to "This Community Values Healthy Relationships." This community values life and wellness. This campaign underscores the urgent need for involvement by taking action, speaking out, breaking our silence, and seeking help when we see this problem in our life, in our family, and in our community. Now therefore, I, Michael, Mayor, Michael S. Maronis, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2015 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence, support those who are working toward its end, and make a personal commitment to get involved in "This Community Values Healthy Relationships." This community values life and wellness.
Okay. So, um, as a board member on the El Refugio Board, I just want to give the council, the mayor, the town, appreciation for the proclamation. I also want to take time to invite the community to a few events that are scheduled in October. We have on October 1st at 5:30, a Kinda Light Vigil scheduled at Goth Park. October 2nd at 9:30 AM at the Silver City Women's Club, we will also be being presented with another proclamation. And then also on October 23rd, we will be having a fundraiser. It's a dinner silent auction, and we do have tickets for sale. You can contact staff or any of the board members, and I also have tickets for sale, so I just encourage you guys to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public input. We have three who've signed in. I'll remind you, you have five minutes. Well, it'll be real easy to give you a one-minute warning up here. First is Lee Gruber with the Arts and Cultural District.
So, Mike broken?
No, nothing works.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and councilors and staff. Thank you for listening to me. I want to report to you on behalf of the Arts and Cultural District. I am serving as the interim director until we put another director in place. We're in the process now of accepting applications, and those applications, I think, by September 30th, we will stop that process and then begin the interview process. So, we are looking now for a new director, and in the meantime, we've got our team in place, Michelle, and Rebecca, and Jesse, and so I'm confident that we can move forward in this way. We are involved with several collaborations now, working with the Forest Service, who is going to come forth with an MOU for the first time, working with the Town of Silver City and the Arts and Cultural District. We are, we've been informed by Theresa Martinez that there's a Vista volunteer that will be placed here in Silver City, I believe for a period of three years, and will be assigned to work on the Continental Divide Trail and helping get the word out and helping with tourism information. That hasn't been confirmed yet, but she sent an email saying that was in the works and should be announced shortly. We are serving as the headquarters for the Gila River Festival and doing a display for Festival of the Written Word. So again, trying to make the visitor center a place where people come for information, where the community gathers and seeks information. I understand that you were there today, Mayor Maronis, so thank you for visiting. We've been contacted by the Copper Country Cruisers. You had asked us to work with them and to work with Zia Rides, so we've been in touch with both organizations, and we'll proceed with trying to, trying to help them. And so that's, that's on the agenda, just to let you know, we're following through with that. There are major digital advertising displays in all, in all three major area airports, El Paso, Tucson, and Albuquerque, and those have been contracted for a year. I was in Tucson last week, and there was the Gila Cliff dwellings on the side of one of their streetcars, and we've contracted with that, with them for, I believe, for six months. So, that, that was really a thrill to see, actually. We have placed a full-page ad in Sunset Magazine, again, the Gila Cliff dwellings, trying to concentrate on the National Park Service and their attempt to draw people to parks and to visit New Mexico in that way. Let's see. We, we're involved with Silver City Getaways. There's a major radio campaign going on in the Albuquerque and Santa Fe area, offering a getaway package in Silver City, and several things like that going on. In regards to the Clay Festival, it was, it was a success, and we were pleased with the number of people who came to town and who came to town for a full week. And if you walked downtown during that week, the restaurants were full, the streets had people on them, and that night where Anthony had his street closed and we, and the Toad had the street closed, it was a marvelous night in Silver City. So, we're working to collaborate and to keep the city strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sissy McAndrew for the, in regards to town website info, Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber update.
I want to exercise something up here now. Thank you so much. I'm Sissy McAndrew. First of all, I just would like to request that we get the town website updated as far as the grass for gross receipts taxes and lodger taxes. Us business people in town are having a very challenging time right now economically, and it would sure help if we could kind of see what trending is going on. As far as the Green Chamber, I wanted to let you know that I worked with Zia Publishing, and we are actually doing a relocation guide this year, so we're, we're trying to look at, at ways that we can help draw people in to consider living here in Silver City. As a Realtor, the Realtors Association is gathering data so that when we have people buying and selling, we can start sharing that information of why they're coming here, how they found out about us. We're finding a lot of the national recognitions is really drawing people here, and we want to be sure that we can keep that up. I had a very positive story about some clients of mine that moved here, bought a beautiful home with no furnishings, and went down and bought everything at one of our local stores. And the local store did great customer service, dropped a bottle of wine off as a housewarming gift, but we really do generate a lot of the lodger's tax for tourism, but we need to look at relocation as well, and that's a whole different marketing approach. So, I'd encourage the town to look into that. The Green Chamber is also going to be working with Farm to Chef, which is going to be at the Farmer's Market on October 10th. The Realtors are working with the Red Dot Studio Tour. We're actually designated as the locations, all the Realtors' offices, where people can pick up tickets. And again, this is a thought that they have, that folks will come in, they'll maybe make a connection with Realtors and think about moving here. That's the weekend of October 10th and 12th, and the 17th and 18th. We're working with the Gallery Association for the Day of the Dead downtown, first weekend in November, and then also the Tamal Fiesta will be December 5th. It's the fifth annual, and we are going to be in the Morning Star Parking Lot and Encore Area, so they pretty much begged us to keep it downtown, and we had a meeting today. Lupe was with us. It's, it's going to be a great event, a wonderful celebration, and just wanted to give you that update that we're continuing to do what we can to try to keep building the community and stimulating the economy. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last is Gary Staley, but just for those of you I didn't mention at the beginning, we do have Councilor Ray on telephone. That's one of the reasons why we have the podium way up here, is to help facilitate his ability to participate in the meeting.
My name is Gary Staley, mayor, members of the council. I introduce myself because I'm dressed a little differently than you normally see me. Councilor Ray, I'm glad you're here by phone. I wanted to mention a couple of things, one as a reminder to the public and also to the members of the council, that the mayor signed and read a proclamation last meeting regarding this Saturday, September 26th, being a day of service in our community. I, I wanted to thank those members of the town staff who have worked tirelessly with me to try to identify some worthwhile projects, Mr. Brown, Mr. Marshall, Peter Peña, your Parks Director, Jesus, and we have come up with a couple of really good projects that we would invite the public to participate with us in on Saturday morning. The first is to, I don't know if you've been by the last day or so, the visitor center has a whole bunch of bark mulch that's piled everywhere around it, and we're going to give the visitor center a new facelift with landscaping, and we'll be spreading the bark mulch around. It came from reserves, so we were able to purchase it fairly locally, and it's a wonderful mulch for, for the landscape, so we invite you to come and help us out. We'll have, and we invite anyone from the community who are out there to come and join with us. The second project is associated with Penny Park. That will be also the day of the Red Hot Children's Fiesta. So there'll be probably a couple of thousand people in the park that day, and one of the things that will be happening there will be a culmination of some work that was done years ago to identify fruit trees on public property, so that that could be gleaned during a good year of, of fruit. And so we're going to be planting a little orchard there at Penny Park, and that project starts about 10 o'clock along with some of the other activities that are there. But the trees were purchased through a grant that the Health Council was able to receive through Peennium, and so we've been helping to coordinate that with the town. So, that will be another service opportunity for anyone who would like to come, particularly and bring your children or grandchildren to help plant some trees that 25 years from now they can come back and say, "I helped plant that," and, and that's significant in our community. The last thing I want to mention, it has to do with our Community Youth Building Program that I am associated with. We invite you to just go by Penny Park and look at the Butterfly Garden that was planted by the 4-H a couple of years ago in the southwest corner of the park. Since then, our Community Youth Building Crew, made up of youth from ages 12 to, to 17, have installed a automatic irrigation system there, a drip system, so your, your parks people don't have to drag hoses everywhere to water. We've kept it clean, maintained, and then we recently completed a little perimeter fence, not to keep people out, but simply to identify the boundaries of the park, the borders, and keep people from riding their bikes through and riding over the plants. We've also installed plant identification markers to identify the various plants that are in there. So, one of the things we'd like to do as a culmination of that is to, we're going to meet with, I met with the mayor today, and, and we want to propose at some point, and we'll formalize this with you, a little contest to have 4-H clubs, Cub Scout troops, Girl Scout troops to actually build birdhouses and put on top of each one of the posts that are on the new fence that we've built there. So, might could have a little contest or something to promote that, but might be a good culmination for that part of the park. But I, I wanted to make the public aware and make you all aware of what's happening not only with that program, but with the Day of Service, and thank you as a mayor and, and members of the council for a wonderful staff to work with. They have been incredible, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Councilor Bedesen.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Mr. Staley just kind of stole the thing I was going to talk about. I was just going to say that the Red Hot Children's Fiesta is at Penny Park this Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and it looks to be a pretty exciting lineup of activities for children, so please bring your kids. I know that we always see lots of happy faces and kids enjoying themselves, so that's what Penny Park's all about, and if they can join in with the projects that you've mentioned, Mr. Staley, especially with planting trees, that'll be great. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Ms. Mc?
Thank you, Mayor. I am just really thrilled to hear this, these proclamations and this public comment. It reminds me again about what a wonderful place we live, and how many people devote hours and hours and hours to making this a better community, and I just really am grateful for all of that. As well as the Red Hot Children's Fiesta, which I've attended many times, the Gila River Festival also starts this week. Again, hundreds of hours of volunteer time, and the Southwest Festival of the Written Word will be in the first weekend in October, again, a fabulous event, and then the two Red Dot Gallery Festivals. All of this is coming up soon, so go and enjoy and acknowledge the amount of work and love and ideas and creativity that come from our people.
Councilor Ray, you have any comments?
Yes, right, sir. Thank you, sir. First of all, I would like to apologize to the, to the mayor, to the staff, and to my fellow councilors about the comments I made about the charter. If we can go back to February 23rd of this year, 2015, when I first started up doing a form that we had, I was asked about bringing back the Ladies of the Night, and I apologize for not going into detail about that. And there is no way that I would bring back the Ladies of the Night. I'm not interested in that, and I should have, should have said it at the last meeting, but I, but I didn't do it, just slipped my mind, and I got corrected on it, and I apologize for, for not bringing that up. We should, or the public should come to our needs rather than relying on the social media, because a lot of times they're absent in appearance. They don't, they put words and they put thoughts in people's minds, and that's, that's kind of a, kind of a hook, though, to us. Another thing is that I would like to thank Lucifred Marsh for going to our Mariachi Conference that we had there at the Western. Dr. Shepherd's wife was there, and I want to give thanks to George Metzheim's family members, and to the radio station, and to Sylvia Arreja. Thanks to Juanita Escobedo for all the nights in the Mariachi Night, the Western, which benefited the Forgotten Veterans Memorial, not the paternity park. I want to thank the news media for covering the Mariachi, for what we had done. I am asking for, to see if it's possible for Mr. Brown to see if he can put up a flag at Gulf Park, since we have had many numerous activities there, and I understand that it's been stolen a time or two. I got asked this question a bunch of times the last couple of weeks. I would like to see if Mr. Brown can get in conjunction with the fire department and maybe put up a flag there on Gulf Park and raise the apparatus at least 10 feet up the ground and put it with a wire rope, maybe quarter inch to 3/16, with a cover of plastic or the rubber. Also, he can put up a nightlight. He can put up, or we can put up a, a United States flag, the state flag, and the POW flag. I think going to put up a flag to show that we are, we are American. One more thing. Please support the things that everybody has done for Silver City, whether it be a small or big event. Please support, and we support, and we support everybody. And we support, and we support everybody. And with that, I thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Conno?
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing is, I've been approached by a lot of business owners who aren't part of downtown, and they would like me to remind everyone that we want people to buy local in general, not just on Bullitt Street. So if you would please start frequenting the businesses that are on Hudson and farther up, they would appreciate that a lot. Also, as far as downtown goes, I know it's like beating a dead horse to say this again, but please slow down. 15 miles an hour, and that's pushing it. Don't go any faster than that, because when someone's in a crosswalk, they have the right way. Don't speed up and try to hit them. People are doing that, that's why I'm saying this. Please stop doing that. It's not safe for anyone. On October 13th, our agenda is going to include a discussion about the banned bag ordinance. Terry Timmy will be here from the Office of Sustainability, and if the public has any more input, that would be the time to do it. That's when we're going to discuss it. So please come or email one of your, email your counselor, call us, whatever you'd like to do, but do it before October 13th so that we can include that in our discussion. And the last thing is, the Town of Silver City is partnering with the Alumni Affairs Office to put on quite a few events for homecoming this year. We're trying to get people who have been a part of Western in the past or are part of it now to be more active in homecoming. We have a lot of really cool things going on, so I'm just going to highlight a few. A very well-known Chicano cartoonist, Lalo Alcaraz, he does La Cucaracha, which is in several newspapers around the country, is coming on October 8th. He is a co-producer of a new television show called Border Town, which is by the same people that do Family Guy. It will premiere, it will, it'll start showing on the Fox Network in January, but he's going to do a premiere of his show here. It'll be at the Global Resource Center at 7:00 on the 8th of October. And after he does his premiere, then he will be available for question and answer and to sign posters and all that kind of fun stuff. The next day, there is a Chicano Conference, which is geared at getting more Hispanic alumni and students involved in the university. There'll be presentations all day long, including a keynote by Mr. Alcaraz, and that's all free. And then that evening, we'll have a dinner and a dance where we recognize several alums that have done a lot for our community, including Senator Howie Morales. The food is by Q's and the dinner is by, I mean, the dance is by Illusion Band. So if you're interested in that, you can see me for tickets or call the Alumni Affairs Office. There's also a golf tournament that day. Every single bit of the proceeds go to scholarships for students, and a lot of them are for local students, so that's a good thing to be a part of. And then on Sunday, we're going to have a really special day. The Newman Club at W N M U is sponsoring a mariachi mass, which will take place at the Fine Arts Auditorium. And then after that, the mariachi, which is a professional mariachi from El Paso called Mariachi Ráíces de América, which is directed by one of our music professors and assisted directed by our other music professor at Western. They will be performing for a couple of hours. And then after them, Haltapay will be performing, which is a local band. And then after that, another band, but I'm not sure which one it is. There's going to be food and vendors, all kinds of things at Old James Stadium, so that the community can come out and enjoy. Also, we're having a Wacha tournament. For anyone who doesn't know what a Wacha is, it's a washer. It's played very much like horseshoes. It's a pretty well-known Hispanic sport. And our, our tournament is being organized by Fidel Quintana, who's well-known in the Wacha world in this county. And first place is $1,000, second place is $500, and third place is $250. So, you know, start practicing in your backyard and come sign up. And you can sign up either at Q's Southern Bistro at the Fry House, or you can call the organizer of this whole event, and that's Patricia Conno. And her phone number is 590-3016. And see you at the Fry House. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. You know, one of the things that you hear repeated among all the counselors and staff and in so many cases through our proclamations and such, we were always giving appreciation to good behavior, good volunteerism, good work towards bettering our community that's outside of government. In so many cases, what really drives a community is that community working towards the betterment for its fellow citizens and its neighbors and its friends and such. And, and the proclamations are important to highlight those attributes we want to see from everybody, to create awareness to certain areas that need to be, that we need to be focused on and promote good behavior. We've had a lot of, even a lot of our public comment is from individuals who devote a tremendous amount of time to our community. But one of the things that I'll just end with is, you know, one of the public services that we have here is the ability for many of our citizens to watch programs like our council meetings, like the commission meetings and such. And one of the drivers of that program here is Lori Ford, who will, I believe, be serving her last day here at this council meeting. And I'd like to express a tremendous amount of appreciation for all the work that she's done in informing our community. And will, she'll be greatly missed with the Cats Organization and in our community at large. With that, is there any further comments? Anybody need round two? Counselor Ray, you're good?
Yes, sir.
Moving on, we'll, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. First one being the special meeting on September 1st, 2015.
We get a, yes. Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Emmett Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town of Silver City. The, I take that back. Rewind. I move to approve the minutes of the special council meeting of the Town of Silver City held on September 1st, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, a second. The motion is stated.
We have a motion second to approve the special county council meeting, the minutes of the special council meeting for September 1st, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next minutes are the regular meeting for September 8th, 2015. Counselor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular Town Council Meeting of September 8th, 2015.
I'll take them.
We have a motion second for approval of the minutes of the regular Town Council Meeting, September 8th, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is staff reports. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mayor, Counselor. I have a few reports on. First, just to follow up on some of the public input, I just wanted to go over some of the revenue numbers. Lodger's tax last year finished 2.5% above projections, so we were about 4% above the previous year. For the first two months of this year, we're even positive of that so far. Gross receipts taxes for the first two months was at a percent and a half above prior to this month. So that would have been June and, May and June's numbers. When we received July's, which was the first month with a tax increase, which I thought was going to be about 5% to 6% increase due to the increase in the tax rate, I mean, it actually ended up about 22% increase. I didn't get all the detailed numbers, apparently the state had some problems in their reporting, but I would assume that the majority of that increase was due to the construction that's happening in the area. So I wouldn't depend on that other than for on and off throughout the fiscal year. So we actually are doing very well so far this year. The Fox Hill Project, which is supposed to follow the Chip Hill Project, was supposed to go on a few weeks ago. The company actually ran out of the material, so they had to reorder because they were pretty busy this year. They were supposed to start this week, but until this rain slows down or stops for a while, once that's done, then we will schedule it as soon as possible so we can protect those streets so they'll last longer. Over the next few months, I'll start bringing some more information to you about the automated recycling pickup program that we're looking at. I've been working with the landfill staff, some of our staff. Hopefully, we'll be having a kickoff of planning with our staff and the landfill staff on Thursday. And then, you know, we'll have to work with the Solid Waste Authority because they do it right now, so I don't want to affect their operations negatively. I want it to be a win-win for everyone, and which I really feel it can be. And finally, I wanted to apologize to the pickleball community because we didn't get those lines put in in a timely fashion. I just realized they hadn't been put in. So as of Friday, those lines were ordered by, we ordered the company, the company that did the lines for the tennis courts, we put in an order for them to come in in line to pickleball courts over there. So it will be done. I know it will be done because I signed the P O and everything to have everything paid specifically. I feel bad about that. I thought it had been done. And the blame's all on me for not following up like I should have. Okay?
Any questions? No questions?
No, sir.
Any other reports? Chief?
No.
Moving on. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing entitled Approval/Disapproval of a Restaurant Liquor License with Patio Service Application Number 964311. Applicant name: Dirtwater Enterprises LLC, D B A. Vicki Zidery. Proposed location: 315 North Texas Street, Silver City, New Mexico. And a waiver of N M S A 1978 Section 60-6B-10 for alcohol sales near a church or school. May actually be near both. The Town Council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had ex parte discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing or had any communications from any party to this case?
No.
No, sir.
You are all qualified. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please rise and come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
Counselor Ray, for your benefit, I'd like you to know that Gregory Bond and Mary Ann Marler have signed and will swear their oath right now. So please, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye. Mary Ann Marler.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I am about to give.
In the matter before this council.
In the matter before this council.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
The hearing will be conducted as follows. The applicant shall present their case. Next will come witnesses in support of applicant's case. The applicant's staff or witness may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes its case in chief and states that the proponent and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff, or by opponents to the appeal of the application. We don't have any opposition, so that won't be part of it. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer will ask the applicant, "Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?" Present your case.
Did I turn it off?
It was on.
Counselor Ray, I'm Mary Ann Marler. My husband and I, Greg Bond, run Vicki Zidery through our LLC, Dirtwater Enterprises. When we decided to do Italian dinners on, and started on December 2nd, we decided to, if it was a successful enterprise, to apply for a restaurant beer and wine license because we want to be a real Italian restaurant on Friday and Saturday nights. So having determined that it is a successful enterprise as far as the dinners are concerned, we have made the application to the state. The counselors who are here have a copy of the menu that shows that we're Italian. They also have a copy of a photograph that shows that in, at the request of the state, we have put in a gate so that the portion of the patio that where beer and wine would be served is isolated from the entrance to the building. And there are signs that say, "No alcohol beyond this point." We, we're really looking forward to this change in our business, and I can't remember what the other thing I was going to say is. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
I do remember. We did get, we did get a waiver from the school district, from Good Shepherd Episcopal, and from St. Vincent de Paul Catholic Churches. St. Vincent de Paul being seven feet away from the Old Elks Lodge where we are is the closest church.
Is there any questions?
Yes, sir. I have a question.
Counselor Emmett Smith?
I appreciate the gate up there. Are you also going to have monitors or having people checking to make sure that folks are not wandering away with a glass of wine in their hand? Or perhaps passing it across to someone who is not even in the restaurant?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, was your response. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir, I do.
Counselor Ray?
Yes, sir. I have a question or a comment. They did, it is going to be a patio service, correct, for consumption of alcohol, correct?
Yes.
Okay. My question to you is it, or to Robert Scavran, if is there, does it have to be enclosed from the street or the road, like a, like a barrier so to keep away from the, somebody to be walking by?
And just to clarify to Ms., our counselor, our legal counsel, Robert Scavran, this is okay by the state as appropriate?
If the application was complete and the, on that basis, the state granted the application, we only have three grounds that we can reject the application. And one of them is public safety. I don't think that the lack of barrier, I think that would be a matter that the state would have considered. I would ask, the applicant was, was a map? Were you questioned at all about the, on the patio service by the state?
Oh, yeah. And actually, the barrier is quite pronounced since the patio is a good seven, eight feet above the sidewalk at all times.
So in your application to the state, you disclosed that?
Yes, and I gave them a blueprint, or a floor plan that included the patio.
I think the record is sufficient then.
Did you, uh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you have any other questions? Counselor Ray?
I, I'll make a motion if I may.
Not at this point.
Okay.
Does this conclude your case in chief?
Yes, sir.
Do you have, is there anything else you want reflected in the record?
We really intend this to be restaurant service. We have no intention to set up a bar or to in any way encourage people to drink when they're not eating. This is simply to augment the menu that we have at dinner and since it's legal through the rest of the day, since we would not refuse to sell at lunch or... the rest of the day, since we would not refuse to sell at lunch or breakfast if someone requested it. But that, our primary intention is to be Silver City's neighborhood Italian restaurant on Friday and Saturday nights.
Does any member of the hearing board have any questions for any witness? Counselor Bedison?
Thank you. So, now I have one, one quick one. Are you all open on Sundays for brunch? Okay, so that's part of the clarification, is that according to state ordinance and also our ordinance, it's service can't, excuse me, alcoholic service cannot, or beverage service like that cannot begin until 11:00 a.m. Am I correct, Ann?
On Sunday only.
On Sunday only. So, that's just, it's just to make sure that.
We're about three hours of beverage service at brunch on Sunday.
Right. So, just wanted to make sure that it's not particularly applicable to any day except for Sunday, that restriction that you don't start till 11:00. So, okay, great. Thank you.
That's clear in the regulations that we got.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
How does the board decide?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Ray?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I move to approve a restaurant liquor license with patio services, application number 964311. Applicant name: Dirtwater Enterprises LLC, doing business as Vicki's Zedery. Proposed location: 315 North Texas Street, Silver City, New Mexico. And the waiver of the NMSA 1978 Section 60-6B-10 for alcohol sales near a church or school.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Bedison?
A second, the motion is stated.
We have a motion, a second is read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, a second is read into the record. Roll call.
Counselor Bedison?
Aye.
Counselor Emmett Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries. This, this public hearing is concluded, is what I should have said.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bedison?
Mr. Mayor, I move for a short recess.
Counselor Emmett Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
We have a motion, a second for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in recess. I call this meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda under new business is approval/disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distilleries Oktoberfest on Saturday, October 17th, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at 200 North Bullard Street between Broadway and Yankee Streets. Liquor license holder information, number one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, number 63004, at HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. And two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, number 67021, HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. Sam?
Good evening, everybody. Counselor Ray, my name and other counselors, my name is Sam Castella. I'm the general manager at Little Toad Creek Pub Downtown, and I'm here representing the license holders for this application. As you've seen in our application, this is a public celebration permit. It allows us to extend our premises, our license permit, in some cases, to a location off-site. That's most often what happens, but in these cases, when we do large events downtown, we like to try to utilize the space in front of the building there to help with some of the big crowds that we get in. Also allows us to do things like have black music outside, have a more festive environment. There will be bands playing, there will be entertainment, there will be foosball, all the sorts of things that have come to become staples of events that we put on. We have requested our street closure, and I believe not that that has been approved. And we are looking to just answer questions about this public celebration permit for the annual, be the second annual Oktoberfest in downtown Silver City.
Is there any questions? Counselor Connaught?
Well, I've got a few of them, actually. The first one is, I attended the last event where you closed the street, and there was a lot of problems with minors being around alcohol. So, I'm wondering how you're going to prevent that from happening again.
Well, we have, typically what we've done is just had roaming security and having wristbands and utilize that approach for monitoring alcohol service.
And the second question I have is, how accessible is this going to be? Again, at the last, I think, two or three events I've gone to, there really hasn't been accessibility into the area that's closed on the street. I'm personally, I've had to use the little cinder block steps that you put for your servers, and that really isn't accessibility. So, if a person was in a wheelchair, how are they going to enter your?
The wheelchair access, actually, on the map, it's a little hard to see, but there's a little green line, and the idea would be there's a wheelchair ramp there on Broadway, and the accessibility would come through the ramp on Broadway. And what we did for the last, the W M U bash on Broadway with our new fencing, we left that open and had a server there checking IDs and watching people as they go in. So, that would.
Actually, I was at that event, and the people were checking IDs on the curb. So, you're going to want someone to come all the way up to the top to have their ID checked and then get in help?
They should have been checking there on the sidewalk, right there on.
Okay. And you're going to need to give them a little more direction because that did not happen. So, as a disabled person, I had to use those steps that were very unsafe.
Okay. We can improve the signage. I do know that that was, there was not a fencing panel there, and that was the idea behind that, was to allow improved accessibility there via that ramp up for Broadway.
Counselor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. Have you ever considered, because I was at the last event as well, and since I wasn't going to drink, they didn't give me a wristband. So, I guess the question I have is, have you ever thought of giving a really vibrant wristband to minors? Not just people who are not going to drink, but to find out to every minor.
Right.
Because that way, you're identifying the minors to your servers rather than, you know, so you're still checking wristbands, so it's, they don't, IDs, so if they don't, if they're a minor, they're going to get, you know, a neon orange or something like that. So, that, so that if I'm in there and I've decided, you know, maybe I will have something to drink, I don't have to then try to find someone to give me a wristband because I'm already, I've had my ID checked.
Right.
Just a, just a suggestion. I mean, I don't know if alcohol and gaming would feel about that, but to me, it seems like, why not identify the minors rather than the people who are going to drink? I don't, no? Our attorney is shaking, no.
Yeah, I mean, and as you were saying, that the thing that's in, that's coming up for me is that would have to be done in conjunction with.
With the rest of the people.
In place of, yeah. So, and I, I understand the sentiment, and I appreciate it. I just, I'm not sure logistically.
That it would work.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree now that, now that we've talked about it. So, thanks, social.
Any other questions? Any questions, Counselor Ray?
No, sir.
I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ray?
I move to approve a two-public celebration permit application for Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery Oktoberfest on Saturday, October 17th, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at 200 North Bullard Street between Broadway and Yankee Streets. Liquor license holder information, number one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, number 63004, HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. And number two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, number 67021, HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico.
Mr. Mayor, a second, the motion is stated.
We have a motion, a second is read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion, a second is read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agen, on the agenda is approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2015-27 to support an application to be filed by Silver City Main Street with the State and New Mexico Department of Economic Development requesting funding for improvements to the Main Street Plaza and further authorizing the mayor to execute a statement of assurances in connection therewith. Lucy?
Hello, I'm Lucy Whitmarsh. I'm the executive director of the Silver City Main Street Project. And New Mexico Main Street, as part of the Economic Development Department, is able to receive allocations of capital outlay funding that are specifically for Main Street communities that are qualified to receive funds, and our Silver City Main Street Project is. And so, we wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to apply for funding for a project that we've been working on since 2006, and it is improvements to the Main Street Plaza, which is where we also have our farmer's market, and which is also, with the farmer's market, is certainly a big benefit to our downtown retail district, and certainly we would hope to be able to enhance that experience of going to the farmer's market and for other uses of that facility. And if there are any questions?
Is there any questions for Lucy? I just have some, some comments. The, you know, one of the reasons why we partner with Main Street is they are one of the tools in our toolbox to gain funding and to improve our community. And one of the vehicles they use are these Main Street capital outlay funds. It just so happens it hasn't been available in the last couple of years, and prior to that, it's always been a very competitive process. This year, it looks like it's going to be a very competitive process, and I think it's always good to try and, try to get an application and continue moving forward and using this tool. But that being said, there is matching requirements. Mr. Brown, do you see any issues in us being able to meet any of the matching requirements or any of the assurances that we're obligated to do with this application?
No, sir. But the benefit of this project is that the 40% doesn't have to be spent until September next year, so that gives us the opportunity to either budget the money, find the money this year or next fiscal year. So, we've got a two-year period to come up with $16,000, which in a $29 million budget isn't a whole lot. So, I'm very comfortable with that match.
Okay. Counselor Bedison?
And if I'm correct, this is already, has been on our ICIP.
For years.
For years. To do this Plaza area, which is nice to see it being brought forward and with an alternative funding source.
Yes, and Lucy's been working with Engineers Inc., and she just got an updated cost estimate for, for the project that they want. We're looking at phasing the project in. I believe this one with, is the bathrooms, right? That's what you're starting with, is the bathrooms? So, yes, we're looking at phasing the entire project in because, like the mayor said, there's not a whole lot of money available, and we want to try to get projects that are actually can be used, start, be used right immediately and have a benefit to the project.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Counselor Emmett Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I've been really a proponent of this project for a long time, especially after having heard a big earful from the farmer's market folks a few years ago about how it would be such a beautiful space, and having seen so many elderly people walking around back there and realizing that they need a more stable space to be walking in. And so, I really am grateful that this is coming for a different funding source.
Just a little additional comment, you know, this was, this plaza actually came into the town's possession due largely to an anonymous donor who donated the property to Main Street, who then donated the property to the town. And the, I think the whole, in many respects, this is part of the vision of that donor, and this is, I think it's a very worthwhile project. This is a very, if, if this is a successful grant, this is a very smart way of seeing that move forward. So, I'm in full support of that. Counselor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the bathrooms that we're talking about, are those going to be available to the public all the time as public, publicly accessible bathrooms?
This is the town public property, and it would be up to the, up to the municipality to administer that aspect of it.
Yes, please, would you please with the bathrooms up the hook?
That's, that's one of the, that's great. And it seems that accessibility will be easy for those with handicap access needs. So, it's great. Thank you.
Very handicap accessible.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions? Counselor Ray, are you good?
Yes, sir. I got a comment.
Sure.
I applaud Mr. Mayor, you, Mayor, and I applaud Mr. Brown and the town council for supporting this thing here. I applaud Lucy Whitmarsh and her crew. I think it is something that will turn out to be a very, very ongoing thing for the citizens of Silver City downtown. We need to have that done. And with that, I make, I make the motion.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve a resolution, number 2015-27, to support an application to be filed by Silver City Main Street with the State of New Mexico Department of Economic Development requesting funding for improvement to the Main Street Plaza and further authorizing the mayor to execute a statement of assurances in connection with therewith.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Emmett Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I want to second that motion is stated.
We have a motion, a second is read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion, a second is read into the record. Roll call.
Counselor Bedison?
Aye.
Counselor Emmett Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Bedison?
I move to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Emmett Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.